On the list is Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. Okay, Jason, or Dr. Underwood, you're in.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
At last, Lord have mercy, Jesus, I'm finally being able to get in. Thank you, Jason. Um, yes, my hand, my hand is raised. I just want to make a quick comment. I'm looking at the comprehensive plan and I see some first steps in that area. And as I fore stated on last week, I saw a first step, hopefully it will be passed. But like a lot of the people, we the people quote unquote stated in their input, we certainly would like some action steps. And I know sometime it takes time, but I hope we don't do it like the 1950s when they said all deliberate speed, everybody know about that, if not research it. All deliberate speed, we want more than all deliberate speed. We don't want it to take 50 years. So we're looking forward to actions. As we, once this is passed, people have some good ideas and we hope that we take them now and forever. Because we are in America and we don't want to ever forget that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person to speak, Eldress Melinda Carr. Yes, we can hear you.
Just wanted to really speak about the resolution. It's going to be right before the council, I sent some comments and I'm just going to read the comments that I sent on the resolution committee to end structural racism and achieve racial equity. Is a great start in publicly declaring the city of Urbana's general position. And the intent has been stated to bring awareness of this practice in the history of the city of Urbana. Based on the explanation at the February 1st committee of the whole meeting, understanding is there will not be specific or future actions included at this time for the city of Urbana. Therefore, the people of Urbana must continue to hold our city officials accountable to stand on the principles outlined in the resolution to ensure the racial equity is achieved. Both now and in the transition to new leadership, we know that you have an awesome responsibility in guiding city government for the people of Urbana. We appreciate the service of our city officials in working toward this end. I suggested some stronger language in a few areas of the less of the resolution and then some minor edits that I copied in the email. And I just wanted to the areas where there are more significant changes. On the, I think this was page three. It talks about it will not be overcome without concerted and sustained instead of effort, I made suggestion of commitment by all. And then in the next section, I carried over that, I'm not going to have time to go through all of this, but while community and government and the section one evolves away from the habitual practice and widespread acceptance of racism and and white supremacy and is becoming a more loving community. So I added that. And then the sentence down further, if the city is to actualize the not change commandments to principles, rights and powers of our constitution. We must be conscious. Down further in that section, the mayor and city council and henceforth speak true to the hate and, or it could be hatred and bigotry of white supremacy. And shall publicly announce everything else. I didn't, I left that as is. The second section or the last section, page four. The city of Urbana recognizes that it will take additional instead of effort, commitment, courage and determination to align our actions with our aspirations. And then I added, in order to carry out the vital needs expressed by the people of Urbana. And that kind of goes back to the beginning, what we said, trying to make sure the needs of the people are taken care of. And then I, the next sentence, the subversiveness of white privilege includes a double standard of imposing, and imposing responsibilities and, and I added restrictions where there are unequal rights and inequitable opportunities. The last, next to the last sentence, the city shall resolve to constantly challenge ourselves. And then I added to become strong leaders in creative, creating a government, community, society and economy. And then change, unchuckled by the past. This is really good, this last part, but I won't, I didn't make any changes, but thank you for considering some of these changes and a couple of you responded. Thank you for your responses. That's all I had tonight. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you. Alan Maxwell.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm going to start on a less friendly note and then I'm going to go on to some more positive remarks. So, one. When you're an academic and you publish things that are factually inaccurate, you retract that publication. Now, the reason that I mention that is because there's an academic among you who published on a community listserv factually inaccurate information. As engineers, we have to pass ethical exams. And it concerns me the matter of governance where the letter, email was signed not as a candidate, not as a private person, but as a member of this body. I'm very concerned about the lack of retraction thus far. And I'm interested to know if there will be a retraction of the statements made by one Eric Sacks. The reason for this is because similar to the same exact things that Daniel Chenoweth was spreading regarding misinformation in the community, to do a perverse sort of inoculation so that people would dismiss the actual issues, thinking that it is conspiratorial or some sort of abstract theory instead of minor but impactful professional misconduct. So, and as I texted to you, I do not consider you the perpetrator of this misinformation campaign, but I do ask in the interest of being an ethical public official, just like you are an ethical, presumably, public employee, that you retract that email on the Western Urbana listserv. I hope to find out that to be the case. Thank you for adding the section about challenging yourselves in the resolution. I'll take it. The main thing that I want to suggest regarding the Imagine Urbana is that due to community distrust and due to the fact that you can see the IP addresses of people going onto the website and therefore can reasonably establish their residency, because it would be an awfully petty thing for someone to have a VPN just to spoof in Urbana domain, just so that they could have some input on how the city runs something. I ask that you remove the registration or login requirements so that people who have been hassled or treated unfairly by this body will not have to worry about whether or not their comments will be ignored because of their name or their past experiences with people in this body. The other aspect is due to outreach efforts. See, I've done a lot of canvassing in this community. And one of the things that I've consistently found is that there are gathering points that you can go to to get rich data sets to help try to learn more about the community. I would like to suggest that the food pantries be one of the places where you make that information available. And this isn't a casual suggestion. That was the very premise that I had joined a line I fighting hunger back in 2017 specifically to try and do. Unfortunately, they were too overburdened to implement it and there was no one who was willing to collaborate on that particular aspect. So I hope that those two things are taken into account. And also you still all owe an apology to buyback by Black Shandana. Thank you.
Next up is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. Last week I brought up action items that the city could do to show that the resolution committing to end structural racism would result in meaningful change and action by the city. I spoke about how the city should stop discriminating in job ads and CPR reappointments. I've lost count how many times I brought up how city leadership and Urbana Police Department leadership has not apologized or acknowledged the damage done to Aliyah Lewis. We have not heard from Chief Seraphin exactly how police staff will be held accountable. This is not the only police misconduct incident that has not been adequately addressed. It has been two months since I brought up the Taser incident from 2019 where Deputy Chief Sol suppressed video evidence to hide what looked like police misconduct. I asked before and I'll ask again, have any of you guys watched the Taser videos and the CPRB meetings? What did you think of Sol's actions and what do you think after watching the Taser incident? Maybe you guys can comment about it today. We've been talking about these issues for close to a year. We've seen Urbana violating FOIA laws. We've seen Mayor Marlin speak dishonestly to the public. We've seen all of you up there trying to silence the public just because you don't like the criticism. My name has been smeared by the city attorney and your contracted attorneys who resorted to attacking my character just to defend the city's actions. And my God, I just heard Lamont Peppers say we strive to make public input accessible to everyone in the video you guys just played. And I was muted by Peppers himself when I mentioned Chief Seraphin's name during a listening session. I recently listened to AOC's heartfelt discussion with the public about her experience in the Capitol riots. AOC was responding to people who called others to move on and not dwell on the incident. When AOC said, we can't move on without accountability, it struck a chord with me and probably many of us who have been speaking up week after week. Mayor Marlin has mentioned moving forward several times and the hope is that resolutions and the revised use of policy will help us move on. But no, we can't move on without accountability. We can't move on without the city apologizing and acknowledging all that went wrong. All the steps that were taken that made us the public so sad, so upset and so disappointed with our current government. Asking us to just move on is like saying it's okay to repeat those missteps. Is it really that hard to say that you made a mistake, that the city made a mistake? Can we have a genuine discussion on how to remedy these mistakes? Thank you.
Benjamin Bopray.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Bopray. I live in Champaign. I'm a citizen representative for the Champaign County Reentry Council, but tonight I'm just talking on my own behalf. Wanted to express my support for the resolution committing the city to end structural racism and to achieve equity. Also wanted to echo other comments demanding substantive action afterwards. I think that's important. Otherwise, you'll lose even more trust. I think this resolution on its own is important though, especially these days with this war on objective truth that is happening throughout our nation and locally. It's important, it's critical for all of us to stand up for the objective truth right now. W E B DuBois said that we don't win this fight with voting alone, but by persistent, unceasing agitation, by hammering at the truth. And I believe that. I, I think Urbana has proven that over the years. With the Ellis Drive six, fighting segregated schools based on information that the schools were having disparate impacts. As segregated groups, especially the, is it the hay school? It took a fight and the fight wasn't over right away. There were people running for a school board trying to overturn it. I believe that fight continues on to this day. Part of the research I do for the reentry council involves a lot of local data, local statistics. And there are racial disparities across all systems here. Education, criminal justice, housing, as we've seen recently with health and COVID. These systems aren't isolated. The disparities from one feed into the other. They're propagated from one to the other and sometimes even amplified in the case of the criminal justice system. I encourage future action to involve collaboration across these systems, across these bureaucracies. Because a lot of colorblind language can be used to propagate those disparities just by saying, hey, that's not our fault that, you know, the clients coming in from this particular system are already, you know, disparately impacted. That we have to take responsibility for when we see those disparities to do something about them and collaborate across systems. Otherwise, we're just as responsible. I urge you to take seriously the concerns of the NAACP and the ACLU on the use of force. We can't just do boilerplate lexible liability language for use of force anymore. If we're focused so much on legal liability, I mean, I realize it has to be part of the concern, but it can't be the only concern. Otherwise, this turns into a a Milgram's experiment where people are just covering their own butts and not making sure that rights are protected. We aren't addressing the safety issues that these officers face, why they're so afraid, why they are ready to kill for people touching their waistband. Because they have to make a split second decision that that person might be armed. We have to address the problems that are leading to these life and death situations that are ending very poorly for people who don't look like me. Whereas people who look like me are given the benefit of the doubt are considered less of a threat, aren't necessarily considered someone who has to be looked at as if they need to live or die in the next split second. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to speak, Colin Dodson.
Hi, thank you. Am I coming through okay?
Yes, you are.
So these are some tough acts to follow. I generally agree with the overwhelming majority of points raised by the citizens of Urbana so far. There's a little bit more I'd like to say, though I risk repeating much of what has been said with respect to the resolution you're looking at tonight. I'll say that I hope you pass it. Before I, before I dig into that though, I do have a brief question with regard to public input in a more general sense, which is to say that I understand the need for orderly and effective meetings when conducting official city business. However, to me, that leaves an open question, which is to say, you know, given that council meetings and committee of the whole meetings are not the place for an active dialogue between the people of Urbana and our elected city government, then what is? So I'll leave that as kind of an open question to sort of stew on. And so I'll move on to the resolution on ending structural racism. And, you know, again, the main thing that I would, I want to really reiterate, that's been said several times tonight, is that it is absolutely essential that, you know, the work doesn't end when the resolution is passed. And I'm sure that to a certain degree, all of you know this, but, you know, the thing is that when looking at something like white supremacy, it's really, really critical that we understand that this isn't just a personal moral failure, but a product of a deeply inequitable and unjust social system. And that ultimately challenging white supremacy and white privilege will be deeply uncomfortable. I mean, we have to look at things like how do real estate interests function in our community? What's the relationship of police policy? You know, how can we extend our views of human rights to more than just an anti-discrimination ordinance? You know, when it comes down to it, like ultimately what I'm getting at and no shade, I'm honestly speaking here, no shade. We need substance and not superficial posture. And I am afraid that it's it's really too easy for something like this, as well intentioned and as well written as it is. Thank you, Sharice, for all of your work on it. Too easily. And I've seen this on boards and in government bodies all too often that it ends there. It ends with a Black Lives Matter mural on the main street in a town, but no structural changes. And we really need those structural changes to achieve genuine justice in our community. Thank you.
Next up is Meg McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. My name's Meg McDonald. My pronouns are she, they. There's a lot to talk about tonight. I don't really have anything written out. I'm just, I have some bullet points and I'll touch on them. As far as the resolution, I said my piece last week. Hopefully that was listened to. I wanted to just move on though and talk about Amolso Coat and see, say that it wasn't on the agenda as expected. In case anybody listening doesn't know, Amolso Coat is an asphalt production company that's been in Ward five for a long time. It was brought up at a city council meeting a few weeks ago about their move. And for some reason, they have applied for a lifetime operating permit at their current location. And it's not clear why they did that because they might already have that permit on file. And so there's a Facebook group called the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association Facebook group. And that's a lot where the discussion has been had so far. So I was surprised to see that there wasn't an update on that on the agenda because that was set in the Historic East Urbana Facebook group, but there will be press on it. And I want to thank Dennis for his willingness to provide information about that. People are really concerned in Ward five as far as what I've heard and I'm sure as Dennis has heard and the mayor's heard. They're scared that Amolso Coat isn't moving, that this is some kind of petty move in response, the neighborhoods concerned. So please just be forthcoming and as transparent as possible. Like when I ask what information have you requested, it would be helpful to know, like Amolso Coat, we've requested information from them, but they still haven't gotten that to us, to you. So that's a little concerning. I guess I'll move on to my next point since I only have two minutes left, which five minutes would be nice. But anyway. Just the drama with all this city politics has been really disheartening. And I know you all are probably like, oh, says you, but I'm, I was a concerned citizen. I didn't plan on running for city council. I didn't plan on doing any of this. I think I came in concerned when I saw a police harassment incident on my street in Ward five, I started showing up. And then that was like in February or March. And then the Aliyah Lewis thing happened in April. And honestly, I've been showing up to city council meetings since 2016 on and off. And so it's just, it's, it's just really sad that this is how people in the township, people on city council, this is how you all react to newcomers coming forward and volunteering their time. And especially Eric Sacks, I saw that email. That was really disheartening. What do you, what are you talking about? The, the future of the city is truly at stake. It's under attack. It's not just like a Ward two issue. I feel for Christopher Hansen. He is also just somebody who was wronged by the city and is a concerned citizen and has just been coming forward and trying to get somebody to be held accountable. And you all are just basically smearing citizens that are trying to represent their ward because you all have seemingly failed to do that. So, and, or at least genuinely listen. I didn't have anything planned. Imagine Urbana, that sounds great and all. But we've been giving you extensive input. So I don't know why that there's this like extra step. Like it's hard enough to get people to show up to city council meetings. Why are you now going to be like, well, no, public input in the city council isn't the place to really give input about the city. We want to have like a consolidated space. Now, I don't, I don't really understand that. It makes it harder on people. It doesn't make it more accessible. Um, and yeah, the snowplows thing, I think if we defunded the police, there'd probably be more money to actually protect people on the streets. So let's get that fixed. Thanks.
Thank you. Just for the community's information, the city administrator will be giving an update on Amolso Coat during the reports of officers tonight. Next up is John Kraft.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the email that went out on the listserv. I am one of the Edgar County watchdogs. And I can say with 100% truth that we are not out to destroy local governments. We do not have a goal of destroying local governments. We do not have a goal of installing people into local governments. I know where Mr. Sacks got this information. And I would just appreciate if he would research that person that gave him this information, find out what her motivation is. Because I could tell you right now, her motivation is not good. I do know that once we found out that she lied in a sworn document to a court in Lake County, Florida that impugned her reputable employer in that sworn document in an attempt to get an order of protection against one of her neighbors. When we brought that out and brought it to the public's attention, I believe she was fired from that job. And her whole purpose in life right now is to extract some type of sick revenge on the people that outed her lies to the court in the sworn statement. We are not part of any patriot movement. We're not extreme right wing. We are for good governments, governance and good governance that follows these statutes as they are written. As far as comments like it, they have been described on the internet as extreme right wing. That person I talked about, she wrote that herself. So there's no being described on the internet as, she wrote that. She opened up four websites so far and there's more coming. Each one points to the other with the same libelous, slanderous language in it that is 100% false. And Mr. Sacks, I don't feel no ill will towards you for forwarding it. I just wish you would have researched the information that she has on those websites before you forward it to a listserv of 500 people. And I would also hope that you would research that, contact us, call us up. My phone number is on my FOIA request. I'll talk to you. I'll drive to Urbana, have coffee with you and we can discuss everything. In a peaceful envi- and we can discuss everything in a peaceful environment. We have no ill will towards anybody, and I wish you would research that, retract that, that listserv email, and write an apology. I came to Urbana to show, to show up at a meeting because we were getting several emails that the city was not, or the city instituted an unreasonable public comment policy. I believe that to be true. I attended several meetings, witnessed it, and then we filed a lawsuit. The judge will decide, ultimately decide whether the city had an unreasonable policy or not. I was informed that the city attempted to get money for FOIA requests that they shouldn't have got. So I FOIA'd for the names of the people that paid that money. It was denied. I believed I should have gotten those names. So I sued to get those names. It's about six names. And a judge will ultimately decide that issue. So once again, please retract the email and please apologize.
Next up is Haki.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Haki, or Drake, resident of Champaign, recent graduate of the University of Illinois. I'm tired. I think I'm just tired of, you know, work, but of course we don't continue to work. But I'm tired of input being reduced to simply hearing the concerns of a few individuals, but then the implementation of a program or a project without that same input of, for that, without the same continuation of input from the people and from the community. I remember something about the Imagine, you know, the Imagine Urbana sounds really well. And I, and I, again, and I said it last week as well, I hope that those racial pod discussions continue, because Imagine Urbana will not save Urbana from racism, or, you know, or the resolution is not going to save Urbana from racism. Again, that has to be a continual, continual effort on you all to ensure that the people, especially the people that are out there in the communities, out there on the streets for the people, that they are actively involved with the implementation and the creation of programs and said rollout of programs. When we're talking about university students being involved with Urbana, who's going to introduce them to the community? Not the University of Illinois. The University of Illinois does not have a great relationship with the community. It's going to be up to the students to make that type of relationship. And one of the only students that have made, that have actively tried to make that relationship happen is me, Allison, Dimitri, other black students in BSFR. But I have been out here and I am the one that has helped increase that community and campus collaboration, the cooperation. So you have, so you must include the organizations that have connected the community in order to be a part of the Imagine Urbana and to ensure that those organizations are actively funded, to make sure that those organizations are actively equipped to carry out that mission. It can no longer be, again, it's the same organizations all of the time. I am tired of all of those same organizations having the same power, being pushed around and moved to the next person. The power has to be removed from this wheel of power that's going on in Urbana and Champaign, the nepotism. It has to end. When are we going to allow some new faces? When are we going to allow some new thinking? When are we going to allow some new voices, some new youth, some new people, some new innovative ideas? Let's be honest here. There were discussions again about see you at home. Not to ever discredit the work that is being done by the institutions, but there is structural violence. I'm currently doing research with the professor about structural violence, that the structures in place are inherently violent. They are inherently racist. And in order to ensure that people are being fed, that people are being, given the resources necessary, either we, either we take over the structure and we completely rebrand it, or we must create our own structures. And I am wholeheartedly about the creation of our own structures. Trust me, the people have been coming to the new structure since May of 2020. The people have been coming to the new structure. The structure that we are building is being built right now. Either you ride along with that new structure, or you're going to allow the resolution to wither away to simply just words of nothingness. We have to ensure real action. We also have to ensure that we are included. And let me speak to my brothers and sisters and my allies, and my non-binary allies as well. They will give us something, not say it's because of us. We must continue to work and get whatever it means, we get it, move on forward with depression escalation. I'm ready to move on and organize what you all into 2021, because I will. We will be at the table, or we will construct the table and remove and dismantle the last one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Justin Hendricks.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Justin Michael Hendricks, Champaign, Urbana resident, Parkland College student, creator of Hit and Homeboy. Where we have provided services across Champaign, Urbana, across Champaign, Urbana at an alarming rapid rate since the summer, along with many other street activists, morning, noon, and even after midnight hours, as the world doesn't stop outside the office hours. Tomorrow, please tune into our series, Black Mental Health Matters, every Tuesday for the month of February at 6 o'clock. Tomorrow, our discussion will be my mental health in high school and young people. Last week, we did discuss the LGBTQ community at large. Please make sure you tune in. We have more special guests from Champaign and the state and surrounding states. For more information, go to Hit and Homeboy on Facebook, that's H I T N H O M E B O Y. Let's get to it. I'll say this, if you're not going to name names, leave it on the playground. To hear people like Ms. Wayne Williams speak with such cattiness towards people who quote unquote voted for you, niece, let that hurt go. Danielle, now let's get to it, little girl. What we won't do is act as if we can't multitask outside of office hours and sit on here hiding our hands, yet on social media platforms trying to flex when saying things like this to be mansplained about my office in the middle of this as bit much, and frankly exposes how little you know about our work. Did you know we just, we just get a call like this one every six minutes at the township? What I do know is this, those every six minutes are not after midnight. Those every six minutes are not on the weekends as well, as when using those social media platforms to make a statement as we don't mansplain. We state facts. Taking that victim role won't work here. Move on with it. But I'll continue as you stated. Y'all know how to find me. If you will not speak to me directly, I'm going to chalk it up as political posturing and keep doing the work, because that is what we, that's what my office does. My office is the township. It's not Danielle's township. We do the work. I understand that and I applaud it. But when you say things like, y'all know how to find me, y'all know how to find me, I don't think you want any of this smoke, ready or not. Don't make statements like that. I wish I had the same turnaround as when men lie, women lie, but numbers don't. As I emailed you back in October to collaborate with you, yet I was not met until recently with the response. You may want to say you're busy. I don't dispute that, but political, obviously you are, as I'm not. I don't belong to a party. And last time I checked, it's your name on endorsements, commercials everywhere I see, not mine. I hope that that money's coming out your personal pockets, not the township's and anybody else's. I keep my work and those politics separate, as I don't engage them together. You should try the same, my love. This is what happens when you put yourself and your feelings in a situation that did not criticize your character. However, you chose to step out and you missed, as it was a missed opportunity when given work in work hours to someone that was a black queer girl in need. You gave office hours for help. Excuse me, the disrespect in that, as my grandmother would say, you showed your slip, pull it up. To quote another person in a political position, not sure who needs to hear this, but I'm sick of encouraging of encountering posts that are trying to dunk on the township supervisor's office in their leadership. It's not emasculatory, it's literary. And to note, yes, Emily Rorigas, that status of the township was cute this morning, as I never discredit them. But what I will say is this, the next time, make sure you know I read messages. And quite frankly, I don't approve of those. Thank you to those individuals who, and the person who is running in Ward, in this ward, that I do know that is literally making sacrifices for a black woman and a black person without having to make clout for it, yet not looking for white saviorship, as I have seen since the summer with a lot of you and misused and mistreated community. I hope that Ward votes for her. As I see her playing a role, not in white leadership and white saviorship. In closing, I suggest you get a street team that is dedicated to working after midnight, meaning 11 to 7, even weekends. There is a trans population, there also is a non-genetic, non-genetic conforming and two intersex people that live in the city, but you wouldn't know that if you engage in the streets, because they need things. Oh, and don't forget, I'm from the streets and we can fill yours up anytime. In closing, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Your time's up. Last to speak, Christopher Hansen.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hey, so my name is Christopher Hansen. I live in Urbana. It's been about 10 months since the Aleah Lewis arrest, and that brought a lot of attention to the city council. And one of the statements that we heard over and over after that and after the George Floyd incident, from this council, we heard, you know, change isn't going to happen overnight. Change isn't going to happen overnight. We heard that repeatedly. And it stretched out for weeks, and I think we, even months later, we heard that same statement. Change isn't going to happen overnight. And now it's 10 months later from the Aleah Lewis incident. And as a reminder, you know, some people have been working on issues of race disparity and police reform misconduct for decades. And so I've noticed you stopped saying change isn't going to happen overnight, because you probably realized how silly it is at this point. But we do have a resolution before us where it doesn't indicate any actual change, or it doesn't indicate any action for change, at least. And I think you've heard that from a lot of community members tonight. And so I strongly encourage you to add just anything, anything actually, that is actual action to this resolution before you pass it. And you heard a good number of examples of those already this weekend last. I was also not excited to see our community engagement coordinator involved in the Imagine Urbana process. I mean, this is someone who, you know, actively muted a member of the public for trying to speak. I don't think, you know, muting people when they're trying to get public input is what a community engagement coordinator should be doing. But here in Urbana, we tend to name things the opposite of what they are, which is one of the reasons I'm concerned about this resolution. Because when we do these things where we just kind of name something and it's posturing, it tends to be a cover for the fact that we're not going to actually take any action. And so that's what really concerns me about it. And someone earlier regarding this resolution said that because the resolution has no action, it's still up to the people to hold the government accountable. And that brings us to this item on the agenda, the FOIA officer Ross McNeil, this appointment. Urbana has done a great number of unlawful things in regards to public records. And you're aware of that from the Illinois Attorney General, and you're aware of that from the Champaign County Courts. And so it's, there's no really real question of that, but the problem is you keep appointing people who are going to use the same tactics. And, you know, Mr. McNeil has been doing the same things that Kurt Porman was doing in terms of FOIA requests. And so now, it does not say in city code that the city council has to approve the FOIA officer appointment. In fact, I don't think it's written in city code how that designation happens. So this appointment is essentially being brought before you, I guess, as a courtesy. But I do hope you'll discuss it. And, I mean, you don't have much on your agenda tonight. So you could discuss that, and you could discuss what action item you could add to this resolution. And I hope you, I think you should discuss whether you're going to bring the position of FOIA officer back to the city clerk's office, because it really matters to the voters a lot right now, right? I mean, because we have a city clerk election, and they're talking about records. Tatiana Aments is talking about records. So if it's the intent of this body to not have the city clerk be FOIA officer going forward, I think you should make that clear to the public. And, yeah, I, Mr. Sacks, I would like to know from this body if it is everyone's contention that all of the new candidates running are part of a right-wing extremist takeover group that is trying to overthrow democracy? Or is that just the contention of Mr. Sacks? Because that's the implication he made. He didn't just make that implication about one person. He said it was across the entire ballot that this was happening. And I think this body should issue some kind of statement in regards to that, and if the rest of you agree with that, or if that's just someone's personal.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.